Oh, really? We don't hold that much of a...
We did all right. We had another call out, I think, was it? We were both spot on.
Hi, Ken, this is...
I'm not sure. That's a scary... You have to scare your seventy years old.
I just need to clarify this.
I hope... I hope we... Yeah.
What's going on? So, I got a call from... (laughing). I said, you know, my means of solving problems is through communication. Some people solve problems through the courts. And then I said, um, this happening is the only person who lives in this situation is not the taxpayers in the city, it's Larry, it's not the county, it's the lawyer that works for the city, it's Larry. And I'm okay with saying that, because it's true. And I was talking to one of their council members, and he said that, too.
He said that, too?
Yeah.
Apparently, somebody didn't review it, or it didn't get signed. Terry Sains called it, said she was pulling it. I don't know. Debbie tried to call her, and she didn't answer the phone.
Surprise, there's a lot of people here. Light agenda.
Except for the two of them.
Light agenda, don't curse us.
Hey, Jean, the...this tour we're doing is just, I was told, is just a couple of buildings right here. Okay, so the custodial of that concession, that's behind the sheriff, right? The old motor pool? Okay. Yeah, I haven't been in there. Yeah, I haven't...I haven't been to behind the old motor pool yet. Haven't been there yet.
Across the street? Or we're going more than just across the street?
They're going to the purchasing.
Right.
They're going upstairs, just to look around.
Like for, at the Ed part?
At the Ed part, and then they're going to the old motor pool where...
Let's see. Both these guys are running for higher office.
Parking lot?
Amongst county employees.
He's gonna take this on a tour, because John Hess and Kyle are in town, so it's Brian Clement Show.
Okay, um, we just need to have the announcement cover this building, that building. I'm sure it has an address, I don't know what it is. And then, behind the old motor pool, the parking lot, the parking lot north of the building.
Start the meeting.
Anyway, so, uh, what's the plan?
Maybe we should, like, have an announcer of the clock, what time it is. Have a voice announcement.
Oh, yeah, Michelle, you can turn the lights off, turn the lights off, and turn back.[231.04][231.04](laughing).
Hey, Alan, what time is it? Do you know by any chance?[237.93][237.93](laughing).
I'm not sure. Oh, excuse me. Well, he figured, hey, he figured we didn't have a loaded agenda today, he just kinda kicked back.
I wonder what higher office you're running.[254.62][254.62](laughing).
All right. Would you release the flag salute? All right. If you please stand and join me in the flag salute led by Supervisor Vanderpoel, remain standing for a moment of silence.
Ready?
Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. All right. Take up our board supervisor matters, and we'll begin with Supervisor Vanderpoel.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of things I just wanted to go over. I had a couple of meetings yesterday, and one of them is gonna be bringing up an agenda item that's gonna be coming before the board supervisors for consideration. And that specifically is dealing with the white areas and that are outside of irrigation district boundaries within our county, and how we plan to approach the groundwater sustainability legislation and planning as a board, specifically because we have white areas, areas that are outside of the irrigation district boundaries, and all three basins that are existing within our county. So, we need to take a policy position, give direction, so that these irrigation districts and other authorities that are forming have an idea as to how the county will be participating and collaborating. So, that meeting will be set, hopefully, for later on this summer. And then also, I had a meeting with self-help enterprises specifically dealing with a very short timeline regarding federal funding and potential state funding for ground, for drinking water project out in Oakville or Highland Acres, just west of Tulare. So, that is moving along quickly, and more and more wells continue to go dry in that community. But I do want to publicly acknowledge and thank OES, Andrew Lockman, and the group for all the work that they are doing and being very responsive to getting tanks to the residents who have lost their wells in that community. So, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Here, Mr. Cox.
I prefer Oakville, myself. Last week, Supervisor Sheed and myself attended the Visalia Chamber of Commerce Man and Woman and Large and Small Business of the Year event. It was very well attended, I think there were some eight hundred people there. A very nice event. Wanted to welcome or thank all the people that did attend that and wish the winners that well, as long as all the people that were nominated, there were several nominated that were, I think, worthy of that honor as well. Last week, this is the second week of Summer at Lights program, huge successes in many communities. I saw pictures from Rudy Mendoza from Woodlake area where they had maybe an arm's length between people in the pool out there, so very successful all over the county. I attended one of the Visalia events where there were probably about a hundred and thirty people, and many families were there as well. This weekend, I went up to the Bay Area and celebrated with my son, who graduated from JFK University. He got his master's degree in psychology and counseling, and it was a great, great event. We were in the, one of the old theaters there downtown Oakland, so a great time. Also, this Thursday, for those who might want to attend, the lead graduation will be this Thursday from five-thirty to seven-thirty in the Ag Museum at Muny Grove Park. We have about sixty kids that'll be graduating that program, very excited. A lot of those youth will become working for the county as well as other agencies this summer. That's all I have to report, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Sheed.
Last week, I attended a meeting of the rural county supervisors, and it was in Downeville. And if people don't know where Downeville is, because I didn't know where it was, it's a Sierra County, and it's about a good hour northeast on Highway forty-nine from Grass Valley. And we had a reception at Sardine Lake, and if you have a chance to Google Sardine Lake, it's amazing, it was a beautiful place. I've never been exposed to that part of the country, and I intend to go back. So, it was good for the Chamber of Commerce, we had our meeting there. I came back the following day after our meeting and attended the Visalia Chamber of Commerce Awards Banquet. And on Friday, I attended the San Joaquin Valley Policy Council meeting, and that is the eight counties' transportation agencies that get together, and we were formulating our Washington DC platform when we go back in September. Immediately after the meeting, I attended the San Joaquin Valley Partnership Meeting, which was a special meeting on water, and they took a group of people, a lot of state representatives through East Porterville, I think they were up in Supervisor Worthley's district on a field trip. So, I had a chance to speak very briefly at that gathering, and I think the most important thing that we need to address is that, under this sustainable water management program that we're supposed to put together, none of the programs are sustainable. Our groundwater is not sustainable in San Joaquin Valley without surface water. So, I think we need to hammer that point home every time we have a chance, that we will not survive without surface water. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Innes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Oakville, I thought you were talking about me when you started that Oakville stuff, but you could've probably called Terabella that, Mike. Well, I agree with you a hundred percent, Alan, on that surface water, because I watched that area out there, that Terabella area, grow when the Frank Kern Canal was built, and without it, it wouldn't have the established ag that it has today. So, naturally, that is the, the future of ag in the valley is surface water and sustainability. I also attended a meeting with Supervisor Vanderpoel yesterday, talking about the white areas, and we're not talking about all Caucasians living in these areas. These are, these are areas that are outside of these, these water districts. And, of course, my way of thinking on it is trying, maybe get some of the districts to work these white areas into their districts, even if it takes putting some fees on people, because we sure don't want State of California coming down here and telling us what to do with our groundwater and our, and our wells. So, we're also having another meeting on that same subject, two o'clock, Lourou Tully tomorrow, I will probably be attending that. And I also went to PADD's twenty-fifth year recognition the other day, it was great, a lot of people turned out, and they do a good service for Tulare County, especially with the Alzheimer's people and people that need a, someone to take care of their, their family during the day while they work, so, good program. So, that's all I have, thank you.
Going back to this sustainable water situation, Alta irrigation is kind of at the forefront of this process. They already have a bill that was submitted by Perea, the state legislature, which would create a governing body for a GSA in the east side of the Kings River, which would be the Alta irrigation, parts of, parts of, a little bit of white area, some of the Frank Kern user people on the, on our part of the country. But I made the comment, I said, yes, I think the white areas, I said, in every situation, there has to be an adoption of some stepchildren, and I was referring to the white areas, because, I mean, I think that the districts are the ones to lead this process, given the fact that they have the expertise, they have most of the water rights, they understand the water issues far better than we do. And anyway, but, but it's appropriate for us to sit down and have that conversation at this board level, I think, especially in your southern and the southwestern part of the county, we have a lot larger white areas than up in my neck of the woods, where most of it is covered by, by irrigation districts. I had a meeting last week with the Upper Kings River Authority, which the county is a member of, and we have a project that we're gonna be submitting to the state for, hopefully, it'll be approved, it's a recharge basin project in Consolidated Irrigation District. And Consolidated is actually in a very unique situation. They, this is the irrigation district off the Kings, which is on the west side of the, of the Kings River, a small portion of which is in Tulare County, most of it's in Fresno and in Kings. But they are, they have a tremendous opportunity for recharge. In the last big year, we have a water year where there were six hundred thousand acre-feet of water lost to the Pine Flat, I'm sorry, to the, to San Francisco, they were able to recharge two hundred and fifty thousand acre-feet in Razor Water Table Five Feet. And they have the opportunity to do a lot more than that, and they're seeing sort of a regional benefit, because they're, what they do affects Alta, it affects Raisin City and some of the areas to the west that don't have surface waters, they, they can do a lot to help the groundwater. So, this is gonna be an interesting process, and one thing I was not aware of is that there is this question about what's gonna, what are, what is the basin? Well, the basin, the Tulare County, Tulare River Basin includes the Coia, includes the Tully, and so there has to actually be a coordination amongst all those different, even though there'll be different GSAs, certainly on each of the different watersheds, they have to coordinate their efforts, which, whatever that means, it'll be interesting to see how that works out. Anyway, a lot of work ahead for that, and it's, it's gonna take some time, there's a five-year period in which to create the governance, and then another five-year period in which to come up with a plan, but you're right, Mr. Innes, we certainly want to take, keep control of our own local authority and not lose it to the state. We had a graduation ceremony last night of the Drug Court, and I, there were over two hundred graduates, and it was just an amazing event, very festive affair, and the before-and-after pictures of people who were as addicts, and then as they cleaned up and sobered up, and how they look today, it's just a remarkable transformation. It was a great, great event, well-attended. I know Supervisor Sheed was there, Supervisor Cox, were you present?
Didn't make...
Your name got called, and I didn't see you out there, but, anyway, so, good, a good turnout, and I'm just glad I was able to represent the board. Airboard met last week, we adopted our budget for the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Governing Board, there's still significant funds we've made available this coming year for fireplace inserts and upgrading of fireplaces to gas and wood-burning devices, so, wanna make sure that our folks... Last year, Tulare County was kind of at the bottom of the rung of applying for these funds, and it may be more because of the sales, I don't know whether, there may not be a lot of sales points in Tulare County, so perhaps people were buying in Fresno or someplace else, but I would certainly like to see us take advantage of that. Last year, there was up to fifteen hundred dollars for wood, wood-fired devices, and another five hundred for gas-fired devices, and for low-income people, it was even higher than that, so, a real opportunity for people to upgrade their own systems and help clean up the air at the same time. I believe that's all I have, so I will then... I forgot something. Yes, Supervisor Sheed.
Well, I was at the San Joaquin Valley Partnership Meeting, and I had a side conversation with someone who sits on the California Water Commission, and it was pointed out to me that Temperance Flat is not eligible at this point in time for Prop. 1B money to build the dam that would, on the bond we just passed, because the federal government can't be an applicant for those funds. So, we're gonna get together, and what I'll be working on is we're gonna have to form a JPA to be the lead agency for us to even be eligible for the money that was set aside for surface water storage, and apparently, we're gonna have to get this JPA put together relatively quickly, because there's already movements to cut us out of Temperance Flat, out of that bond money.
Surprise, surprise. All right, we'll move on then to our public comment period, and I have a, one request here from Jose Segala. Did you want to speak to the agenda items when they come up?
Yeah, when, when, I've had requests in number thirty and thirty-one, so that's best.
Okay, very good, I'm sorry, well, I missed that part until I just saw it coming up.
All right, thank you.
I know that Jim Solins is here today to, to make an introduction. Morning, Mr. Solins.
Good morning, Jim Solins, University of California Co-op Extension, forty-four thirty-seven South Lispena Avenue. Chairman Worthley, members of the board, Mr. Rousseau, Ms. Bell Lang, it's my pleasure to address you this morning. I came to Co-op Extension in nineteen eighty-three as a livestock range advisor in Southern California. I had Los Angeles, Riverside, San Bernardino, and Orange Counties, I had more, more people than I had cattle. But I had the honor of July of nineteen ninety-three to be appointed as the University of California County Director in Tulare County. I, it was something I always wanted after I got Southern California, to get to where ag is strong, before they paved all the agriculture over in Southern California, and I was very lucky and felt like I made the right decision. I'm proud to say, during the last twenty-two years in Tulare County, our department has served our clientele well, our growers have overcome many challenges, and today Tulare County is the number-one ag county in the nation, if not the world. Our youth have gone through leadership development in 4H, and serves today, they serve our communities and our families, and use that training quite well. Our Nutrition Family Consumer Science Program has helped the health and well-being of families across the county that needed nutrition advice, and our students. And our citizens are making better decisions in their home landscapes and gardens through the Master Gardener Program that we instituted in our county, starting in nineteen ninety-six. But above all, I want to thank the board supervisor for the support and partnership that's made our joint efforts possible, and it seems only yesterday that we built our ag building in Tulare. And we've had, we faced freezes, we faced floods, fires, droughts, pestilence, as new pests move in, and, but we've been able to respond and contribute to the county's well-being. So, I want to say thank you to you, and in turn, I want to introduce Kevin Day. Kevin has been our tree foot advisor since nineteen ninety-one, and is well-known among the university and industry for his research and his scientific achievements, and I look forward to the opportunity that he has to lead the Co-op Extension Department in Tulare County. So, with that, I'd introduce Kevin Day.
Thank you very much, Jim, Mr. Chairman, board members, distinguished guests. I am Kevin Day, it's an honor and privilege to be here. I think one of the things that has set our office aside for so long is that, for more than sixty years, probably approaching seventy, we have only had three county directors. Jim served approximately twenty, twenty-two, twenty-five years. Prior to that, of course, it was Kirk Lynn, who served more than twenty-five years. Prior to that, anyone want to guess? Old name, some of you may remember Sheldon Jackson, who also served more than twenty-five years. So, again, I think that continuity has been a tremendous asset to our office. I appreciate also the support the board has given over the decades, and I look forward to serving as best I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. I pointed out to Supervisor Innes that Kevin also is a former Dinubon, and a person who used to spot for the varsity football team, so he's, he's okay in my book. All right, anybody else wishing to address during the public comment period this morning? Good morning, sir, come on forward and give us your name and address, please.
Morning, my name is Jack Flores, two-one-zero-seven-zero, Daisy Avenue, that's in Porterville. I'd like to bring attention to the board, we're talking water here and everything, and that's what I'm here for. On June second, two thousand and fifteen, one hundred and fifty-seven residents representing one hundred and twenty households in Village Gardens, West Porterville, signed a petition and presented it to the Porterville City Council. This petition opposed water being taken from our neighborhood and delivered to unknown locations. There are approximately four hundred and fifty to four hundred and seventy-five residents in Village Gardens. Village Gardens, I don't know if some of you are aware of it, but it's located north of West Olive Avenue, west of Porterville, behind the Old Valley Furniture Store, with walnut groves all around us. The residents of Village Gardens are strongly opposed to the five hundred thousand gallons of water per month being taken for the next ninety days as agreed between the city of Porterville and the Tulare County for the tank program. We sympathize with everybody with the water problems, East Porterville, I've been out there, I've seen them, it's heartbreaking, but the weight of all this water being taken from our neighborhood well has a tremendous impact on our water system, not only that, but also our lives out there. The walnut grow, growers around us are and have been pumping groundwater to flood their groves. Like you just said, there's no surface water, it's all coming to the well. One well in the walnut grove approximately ten feet from our west border of houses has been drilled, has been drilled deeper for irrigation of the walnut trees. The situation is also affecting the kids in our neighborhood. The kids are kids, but some of them wanted, well, some of them wanted to puncture the tires of the water trucks as a way to keep the water in our neighborhood. Of course, they were told not to by the adults out there, because we told them, this was not the type of action, as it would not handle our, take care of our situation. I mean, this is how, how it's affecting the lives out there, the kids. Situation out there is, well, you, you see these water trucks back and forth, going from our well, leaving out with our water. It's city, the predicament is, it's a city water service, but we're in the county, it's been bought out. It's hard for the kids to constructively express their anger and frustrations, because they see their parents affected by this water issue that we are all experiencing.
Thank you, sir. Anything else you want to say?
I had some more, uh...
You can just wrap it up, is there something additional? I'm just curious, has your system gone down?
Uh, no, not yet, but on the west side, we're not connected to the city water lines, just a well. And there have been ten to twelve households west of Village Gardens that have had their wells fail. You know, we don't want, we don't want to become an East Porterville out there on West Porterville. And it's just the fact that there's more tanks being put out, where's this water coming from? We can't, we cannot handle this water being taken from our well. If our well goes out, we're done. We have no fire protection from the fire hydrants out there, we have four hundred and fifty to four hundred and seventy-five people, their lives are being jeopardized out there. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else wishing to address this this morning? All right, we will close the public comment period, and then we'll take up our consent calendar. Item number thirty-three is off calendar. Is this pulled from the consent calendar, be handled separately, or is it just off?
No, it's off the calendar.
Okay, very good. All right, and there was a request to speak to items thirty and thirty-one by Mr. Segala. Yes, why don't you do that now, so we can handle it? Thank you, gentlemen.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, board supervisors, my name is Jose Segala, my address, eighteen-eleven West Sunnyside Drive here in Visalia. Wanted to take the opportunity under this item to bring up an issue that we've been working with over the last couple of months, as a representative of SCIU, working with folks at Lake Patrol. What you have today before you is a contract, an amendment to a contract for the county to provide public safety services for the Army Corps of Engineers. And so, one of the things that I wanted to do is bring to your attention was the fact that we have a number of folks out there who, who work very hard on behalf of you as a county employees. They are designated as Lake Patrol Attendants, and I want you to keep focused on the key word attendant as I talk about what's going on, and someone that, folks that are out there working hard to make sure that they do their best to protect the public. But it's very difficult when their hands are tied, when the proper equipment they need, and the policy direction is absent. It's difficult for that. They wear uniforms, they wear badges that are very similar to the Sheriff's Department, and so there's, there's a sense from the public that these gentlemen are there to protect them. But when things happen, they are not allowed to arrest anyone, they are not allowed to get involved, they have to call on their cellphone, and hopefully, they have cellphone service or the radio, and wait thirty to forty minutes for a sheriff deputy to show up. I don't know, I would imagine some of you have already had the opportunity to go out to lakes during the summer, and it's very, a lot of folks enjoying the amenity that the county has to offer, the, enjoying the opportunity to bring their families to a place where they feel safe, but, as you know, summertime brings a lot of folks out there, whether it's gang members, or folks that are drunk, folks that are unruly, and it's difficult for individuals who have no authority to do anything about it. They have the authority to cite on the waterways, they are, they give out tickets, they have to enforce federal, state, county, local laws, and so when it comes to dealing with the physical boat, they're out there citing. Their, their citation refers to them as officers, but they're not officers of the law. If they come off the boats and something happens where they've had gang fights, where they've had altercations, they've just gotta sit there and watch, and see, you know, wait for the sheriff department to come out. So, I think one of the things, I know that they've met with Mr. Pilligard, and they've met with Mr. Rousseau, to talk about these issues directly, and we're hoping that those conversations come to some kind of fruition, so that they can have the proper training, the proper tools, in order to go out there and do their jobs. I would definitely like to, they definitely would like to invite you to come out there with them, to look at what, the kind of things that they have to deal with, but more importantly, they are looking for some direction in terms of policies and expectations. What will they do if some emergency happens? You know, we're in the, we're in the environment where a lot of people are anti-law enforcement. You know, we're in the, we're in the environment where a lot of people are anti-law enforcement. So when they approach someone who may not like a law enforcement officer, and they look like a law enforcement officer, may hopefully not lead to some altercations. But to wrap it up, Mr. Chairman, is that we hope that you guys as the board really understand that these Lake Patrol attendants are out there doing a great job every day, but yet their hands are tied, and people think that they're in law enforcement when they're not. So we hope that you guys take a good look at how to help them do their job better. Thank you.
Pick up our consent calendar items, then the only thing taken off is item 33, unless anything else hasn't been taken off or handled separately by board members or the public.
I'd move for approval.
Motion of approval by Supervisor Ennis, seconded by Supervisor Cox. Please cast your votes, and the votes are unanimous. And we will now go to our untimed items, and number 34 is a request from the Workforce Investment Board to approve personal resolution to add two business resource specialists effective June 28th. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman Worley, members of the board, CIO and County Council. I'm here, my name is Jenny Bautista, and I'm a Business Services Manager with the Workforce Investment Board, and I'm here on behalf of the WIB to request two business resource specialists to add to our personnel. These positions are necessary because of the increased work that's happening all throughout Tulare and Kings County, connected to career pathways in the high schools. We have staff working with 11 different high schools at this point to coordinate some of the efforts between employer partners, and so these positions will, will help to accomplish this. In addition, there's also the need with our new legislation, WIWA, as well as, I'm sorry, the need to increase capacity for business services at our WIB. This funding would come from a combination of WIB formula funds as well as some special grants that have been received. In addition, these positions would focus on coordinating efforts with partners from different systems, community college, K-12, economic development, and just to coordinate the services that happen, that are provided to businesses in our area. These positions will also help to support the WIB sector partnerships as well as our layoff aversion activities, and again, to support our high schools as they develop career pathways. I'd be happy to take any questions that you have at this time.
Questions for members?
Quick question, how are the duties going to be split up? You're going to have two, and I know you don't have a very large office, a lot of staff anyways. Are they going to be split up, one with youth, one with adults, north county, south county? How are you going to split that up?
We plan to have each of these positions, including my own position as Business Service Manager, focus on different sectors as well as different regions. So one position might work with four different districts in a certain region, as well as specialize in manufacturing partnerships, just to be able to focus the work in, to be really effective.
Any other questions? All right, entertain a motion.
Vote for approval.
I'll second that motion by Supervisor Ennis, seconded by Supervisor Vanapul. Please cast your votes. Votes are in, and it's unanimous.
Thank you.
We are, a part of our untimed items, we're going to tour some of our remodeled facilities. The intent here is to actually have a closed session, we have a very brief closed session. If you want to join the board on our walking tour, we will be back out here and meet here and then go for a tour of the facilities that are within a short walking distance from this facility, and we'd love to have you join us. So council, we have a couple of management matter handling closed session.
We do, Mr. Chairman. You have items A through E on your board's closed session agenda. Item C is off agenda. I do anticipate an announcement.
Very good, thank you. Michelle?
Announcement out of closed session today, June 23rd, 2015, by Kathleen Bales-Lang, County Council. In the matter of items A and B, the board voted to provide a defense to the tax collector and any other county employee named with a reservation of rights. By motion of Supervisor Cox, seconded by Supervisor Ennis on a unanimous vote, there are no other announcements from closed session, but it should be noted that the board will reconvene in this chamber and from there go to the tour of county facilities mentioned in its agenda.